We'll begin with a moment of silence and please remember the brave people of Ukraine. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on Comcast Channel 12. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved second.
Discussion, all those in favor? A motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved second.
Discussion, all those in favor? And the only item of business today is for us to vote on the annual town meeting warrant. Lincoln?
Yes, so...
You got our public forum on the agenda?
Uh, no, it's not on the agenda.
It was on the posted agenda.
Was it? Oh, I thought, okay. Do you have anyone here who wants to speak?
There's not anything vague or anything. Want me to come up here or over there?
No, you can be there.
So I just, I just have a quick question. So I've met with FinCom and Soft Right, obviously you guys know that Soft Right, we had to put our numbers into Soft Right. It was a new, it was a new program. We had a username and a password and basically that's what I was given. Here you go. And I was given no training. So I kind of just like threw some numbers in there and then, you know, then I went through and I looked at like town meeting and elections. I looked at different things that I had to change. And when I went back to go in and change, you know, things like I had omitted overtime lines for my office, things like that, I was locked out. So I was unable to change salaries. I was unable to update. I have what I presented to FinCom and I gladly share it to you. I'm not like asking for trouble here. All I'm asking is for that Soft Right program. The column says, "Department requested." And I asked Ken Laitel yesterday if, and I had sent emails along the way and FinCom, I have their minutes, I also have them for you if you'd like. I said it to FinCom how I would like for lines that I want that need to be changed because of an oversight by me. I had never used the software before again to be changed. Ken Laitel said he's been directed not to change my line.
That's incorrect. Just to, just to be, just to be clear to your, to your question, you may not have seen it, but I sent you an email this morning in response to your email from a day or two ago.
Yeah.
Saying that this would be changed, that your, your budget request, your later budget request than the deadline that for all department heads to get their budget in.
Okay.
Your request for your salary will be changed.
And the other lines?
The informational budget line to your later request, which was made to me for the first time on Wednesday. So I see that you know this morning.
Well, it was attached to all the, every time I like contacted FinCom and you were attached, I said, somebody needs to change this.
It never communicated to me until Wednesday. And it's, as I wrote to you this morning, it will be changed in the budget.
I wasn't looking at, I have other things on Friday, so.
I just wanted to correct that.
Well, do you guys want to see what was changed? Are you interested or not?
I was actually at the FinCom meeting, I remember that, yeah.
Right, and I did tell them, I don't know if you remember, that, that I was locked out and that's, you know, I mean, whether you agree with the changes or not, it's irrelevant. It's what I was requesting as a department head. What I'm, you know, I'm being honest with you, was what I feel that we need, so. If any of yous want this, because it does give a detailed explanation of why the changes and actually it does, I mean, it might give you some insight as to why it gives what has changed in my office, like in the last year or two since the presidential, all the new rules and regulations that are, you, did you get one?
I didn't get a copy of it.
Do you guys want one or no?
Sure, why don't you, why don't you send copies to us?
Let me send it to you?
Do you have copies right now?
I have copies right now, sir.
Yeah, sure, we'll take them now.
Now, if I may ask you, are you saying your, your budget line item for expenses is what was under, which you couldn't be changed or what?
I'm sorry, so there was, actually there was, none of them. I couldn't change anything.
No, 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 but I'm saying your, your department request.
Yeah, so my salary was one of them and there's an explanation for that. I know you're probably gonna, whatever, but that's okay. I'm requesting what I'm requesting.
Oh, I see what you did.
Then the difference, the elections needs to be 35,000 because of, I mean, I went over this with the FinCom, I don't know if you, because it's actually all explained down below. You see one, two, three, and four, and they're all numbered with basically a brief explanation of, you know, we have three elections next year. We have early voting next year. We have, well, this, next is coming, yeah, so in November, we're gonna, I mean, we're getting nomination papers. It's gonna be a contentious primary. Justin Evans probably can tell you that and he's been to my office and you see the process. The process is, it's not an easy process, so.
If, I mean, if you, we have a new, a new annual budget that we're gonna talk about and under town warrant and elections, it says 2023 Board of Selectmen's proposal, 35,000.
But not on, I don't know why it's on this one different, I'm not sure. Is it 25,000? I thought it got reduced to 25,000.
It's been 35,000 throughout the budget process.
Oh, has it? So I, I'm sorry about that error. But if you, in the FinCom minutes, they say it's 10,000, so I'm not sure.
No, that was 2022.
No, 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 in FinCom's minutes, they say that it's 10,000, so I'm not really sure.
But that was the budget for '22.
No, and you have the minutes in your packet, actually, if you look up the top, it says $10,000, so I'm not sure where that $10,000 came. It says, "Timing up backup documents include a request in the amount of $10,000."
Because?
In the minutes to the FinCom.
Yeah, but I'm only looking at the, the article, the old one, 2022 was $10,000 is what the town.
Yes, because we only had one election. We only had the annual.
Right.
So it went up to 35,000, which was 25,000. Oh, so the difference was 25,000. But that was an explanation as to why there was such a difference. To the FinCom, because they're saying that it should be 10,000. Like this was a FinCom document, you know what I'm saying?
This is, this is a FinCom document.
That's what I gave to Finance Committee.
Well, we're not dealing with the FinCom documents.
No, 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 I know, but this tells you why.
What we're dealing with today is the town warrants.
Right.
That Lincoln is giving to us to, to post.
Right.
And you.
Well, he was asking me, I'm just answering his questions, so.
Right, and I have a copy of the agenda. I don't see public forum on here.
It's on the posted one.
Okay. Okay. Don't let that happen again.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, Lincoln's resolved the issue, which I didn't know. I didn't check my email this morning.
Okay, good, then we're wasting time right now.
Yeah, but I didn't know, well, that's not my fault you're wasting time, sorry.
I kind of think it is because you're standing right there.
But why, I didn't get my email this morning. I've been asking for this line to be changed. I asked Ken Laitel yesterday.
When did you send the email, Lincoln?
This morning.
Uh, this morning. I received for the first time, Dawn had made this request to me to change this line item. I had a chance to respond to it this morning and as I responded to Dawn this morning, this, in the informational budget line item document, that was changed.
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one quick question? This new software that she's speaking, were there any other issues with this in general throughout the?
I don't believe so. In a general sense, the, all department heads were requested, I don't have the date in front of me, but they had about a month, a little more than a month until early December to enter their budget request into Soft Right, producing this document. With that, with that information, with that request to department heads, there was a multi-page instructional document, I think it was about, I think it was about 10 pages. I produced it myself with detailed step-by-step instructions on how to do it. And then, of course, you know, put in there, you know, please, of course, at any time, contact Ken or myself and we'll help you process through that, the town clerk, as did all other department heads met that deadline in early December. Those are the requests that are in the departmental request. The only department head that had requested a change after that early December line in their departmental request was the town clerk. That request came to me on Wednesday. In the regular course of things, I would not want to change it because without deadlines and rules, there's anarchy. And, and we, you know, collectively agreed that this is, that, you know, we should be doing a budget, we shouldn't be doing a $45 million budget on Excel spreadsheets, doing this new thing. Had a little hiccups here and there, but I think the process really has really been quite smooth. Again, on a regular basis, I would say, you know, no, we had a deadline, the departmental request is in there, but, you know, received, received Dawn's request on Wednesday, let's do it this time. Wouldn't intend to do it next year, but I'm happy to accommodate that request in the informational budget line item document.
I appreciate that.
I've had your questions since February.
Not to me.
You're part of the email link for FinCom.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Donna, at any time, did you make a formal request to Lincoln to explain this or?
In my FinCom emails that attached, he's part of the FinCom emails as well as Lori, as well as all the Finance Committee.
Why wouldn't you, if you're having a problem, go right to him? The FinCom meets sporadically for four months a year on Tuesdays.
So I called, I left a message with Lori, I emailed, I, what do you want me to do? Bang on the door and stand out there?
About this matter?
Yes.
The first I heard about this matter with your request was on Wednesday. I had a chance to respond this morning.
Yeah, I mean.
I was not, I was not able to be at the Finance Committee meeting that you had because I was at the Board of Selectmen.
And then I went to Ken and then Ken told me, what Ken told me, he's not, he had to speak for himself, but I'm, you know, I'm not gonna sit, stand here and make up stories, was that he was directed not to change any line, so.
And that is correct in a general sense for all department heads, so that we had this process. We set these deadlines, we talked about it in a department head meeting, we, we had those instructions, so that, yes, that was my blanket instruction to Ken, to that this was the deadline, we're gonna, we're gonna have it and the department request as of early December is the department request.
I haven't been, Randy, I haven't been silent about this. I've told FinCom, I told them in the, I mean, I don't know, nobody's given me directive. They didn't even give me directive.
Here's what I don't understand, Dawn. FinCom doesn't control the town software.
Well, how do I, I didn't even get direction.
Software issue should be directed to the town administrator. I think this is, is this the second time you didn't want to get? These are simple issues. I don't understand why you wouldn't contact Josh, but it's a software issue, or directly send, the, the Finance Committee is not a, a policy or an operational board.
But we, we vote on their recommendation, so I thought, Randy.
But this, I mean, this is a day-to-day like operational issue that they don't have anything to do with. I'm kind of blown away by that, that you just wouldn't walk next door and ask Lincoln, hey, I'm having a hard time logging into this.
And like I said, I've called, I've emailed, I assumed when I met with FinCom and I made...
You have...
And when you're done, let me know and then I'll explain to my information.
You have, I'm sure you keep your emails?
Yep.
You have emails from February to Lincoln?
To the Fin, well, he's attached to them.
Not the FinCom.
Well, he's attached to that.
We're all attached to a lot of emails. It doesn't mean you're combing through every one. How many emails are, put something of this importance to make sure your budget's correct? I don't understand why you wouldn't send him a direct email.
I'll go and see him.
It's kind of mind-blowing to see.
So.
I mean, if you, if you have emails that, I know I'd like to see them.
Not only that, if you look at the Finance Committee, it was discussed in the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Heinemann was there at the meeting when I said that I was locked out and I couldn't change my numbers.
I was not in the meeting, I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting when you were presenting to the Finance Committee.
Well, it says that Mr. Heinemann.
Meeting later, I believe, perhaps, but I certainly wasn't there when you were presenting. When the Selectmen's meeting concluded, I think perhaps that...
Well, this is all, so, so I got a software and I said, here, there's a username and password. I'm gonna tell you from my perspective, okay? I've already said this.
Why don't you tell it to Lincoln from your perspective at some other time?
Well, he's asking me the question and I'd like to answer.
Right, but the solution to the question is for you and Lincoln to, to communicate.
But he's asking me, why didn't I do something I would like to direct, Randy?
You've answered that you believe that going through a Finance Committee.
He's putting words into my mouth, sir.
I'm trying to sum up what you're saying, that, that your answer is that by going through the Finance Committee was a direct line to Mr. Heinemann.
Okay, is that what I'm saying?
I don't, you keep on saying in a...
I keep getting shut up and not being able to tell you what I did. I did a whole process. I followed the process of what I was led to believe. I was shown a software program, not shown it. I was given a username and a password. I went in and I put numbers in. Didn't know I was gonna be shut out. Had a FinCom meeting with Finance Committee that is, we're all supposed to work together, I think, right? Am I mistaken here? Like, so I don't know who...
But this is, this is an issue we have with software, right?
No, no, that was the start of it.
That's an issue.
Now I'm, I'm being accused of not letting people know that I got locked out and that I couldn't change my numbers. So that being said, you know, when I went to Finance Committee, I told them that I could not change my numbers. These are the numbers I want. I sent emails and, and then I've, I talked to Ken Laitel, I called Lincoln's office or the, whatever, and I understand he's a busy man. I get all of that and I sent an email, so, and now I'm here today. So also I want, I don't want an argument, I don't want a debate, I just want my, and he has resolved that.
Actually, we don't, we don't want an argument and we don't want a debate either. What we'd like you to do, which makes, I think was Randy suggesting, is that this is an issue that should be taken up with Lincoln and Josh and do it.
Yeah.
Get it fixed.
Just do it.
Well, it's already fixed.
Get it fixed.
But I didn't know that.
And what are we talking about if it's already fixed?
Well, I didn't know it was already fixed. He didn't, he didn't, you know, I was in town hall, you know, he didn't tell me before we came up here. I was sitting here for the last five minutes before you arrived and he didn't come over and say, did you see my email? So this, like I said, we should be working together, I'm sorry.
But now, Dawn, just, just to clarify.
Since you know when I'm here on a Friday with my grandkids.
How much clarification do we need, Lincoln?
None.
None as far as I'm concerned.
None.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yikes, the, the item on the agenda is the annual town meeting warrant. We have a copy of the most...
No, you can let her go, she's got a recent one.
Correct?
It's the recent one, today, yeah.
Yeah, this is it.
This is it.
This is, this is the one.
From this morning.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about this document that we're about to approve or deal with in another way?
Just a question, could you just fill us in on what happened at the school committee Wednesday night?
Sure, and Selectmen...
It was a good meeting.
Selectmen, Lamatina were there as well, so.
Sure. Either, I was just, because I, I didn't really know the details of what happened, so figured people at home might want to hear it too.
I'll, I'll sum up to the best of my ability. So, so the, the school committee acknowledged that there were some savings to be had in non-mandated busing, or busing. They, after some debate, they voted to reduce the non-mandated busing assessment to both towns and reduce the operating assessment to both towns to, to reflect these savings that have been identified and part by a lot of people, including Mr. Galvin here in the room and Mr. Lamatina, of course. And so that's, that's the summation and those new assessments from the school committee from Wednesday night are reflected in the doc, in the warrant before you.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yes, Randy?
Kind of to piggyback on what Lincoln said, it's a, you know, collective effort where a methodology was, was changed to, I think we all know that being part of the region, regional transportation reimbursement is a huge benefit to us. After many years of kind of pushing this, it was finally drawn out that there was a better method. Ultimately, this saves, I believe it's $583,000 combined for the towns. What you see is via Article 5 in this document is an assessment that's $216,000, but you also, the towns also saw benefit in savings from a lowering of the assessment. And this is what I want to make clear, contrary to some social media posts, there is no reduction to the overall budget, there's no reduction in service. What is actually reflected in that is a savings from a reimbursement. If that, if the assessment was not lowered, essentially what would have happened is the two towns would have been overcharged for that. So that's why the assessment was lowered and you see the total of the entire budget remaining level, because we are getting that savings via the state through transportation reimbursement.
Can I, can I pee? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Pee back. I watched the meeting on YouTube and one of the members, Whitman members of the recreation, I mean recre, yeah, the school committee, regional school committee, was concerned that it would, it would be giving less to the, you know, to schools and it's not. There's no change in it, we're just getting more money reimbursed from the state. Everything stays the same, the state is putting, because of the new methodology, a lot more of the cost of non-mandated busing that it did in previous years. So you just misunderstood and I'm glad you cleared it up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd like to always, how new is this methodology or has it been there a long time and how much savings did we not realize because of this method not being used? That's the question that I'd like to know.
Very good question.
And in fact, what we know now is that they're at least able to go back to FY '21 and refile. I think they can only go a year back and that should amount in some significant savings. Although that was a COVID year and buses were cut short, it may not be the savings that it would be in a regular year, but by my understanding, they're gonna file that and they will be getting some money back for that.
They will or we will?
That's a good question.
That's something that we need to look at.
Mr. Galvin, do you know how far back this method could have been used?
John Galvin, High Street. It's hard to say because the method actually came from Mars, which is the...
Mass Association, Mass Association of Regional Schools, yeah.
It is, it's called the Mileage Method and according to Mars and according to DESI, it is being used, but not by a lot of people. How far back it could go, that particular method, who knows? But in my opinion, there's substantial amount of money that we did not receive from reimbursement, because it goes back years and years and years. They've been doing it this same way, the, you know, the per pupil method for a long, long time. So, you know, what, I don't, I would hate to guess, but it's 585,000, 83,000 this year. You know, let's go back maybe 10, 15 years and add it all up, it'd be a lot, but at this point right now, you know, I'm just happy that we were able to get it going and get it instituted this year and move forward.
I just want to thank you very much.
If, if they file...
That's what you wanted to do, was that?
Well, actually, it was something kind of nuanced, but, but a kind of a catch of us bringing this to light is that I think other school districts are also gonna start switching to the Mileage Method because it is rarely used and that 90% reimbursement from the state is probably gonna drop sometime in the future because the legislature is only putting a fixed pot of money out there. And as we claim more, it's just a, this is still well worthwhile, but it may be a dwindling pool of money in the future.
They'll put a finger in that dyke.
Well, another, another way to put it is when you look at Article 5 in the town meeting warrant, what that says is that Whitman should be paying $216,000 a year for busing the kids that are outside the limits, the non-mandated people, and that's what we're paying. Town is paying that and we should be paying that. Simple. That's the amount. And it's an amount, and it's an amount that is a lot more reasonable than the amount that we're paying, thanks to, thanks to John and some other people and, and some other people too. Randy was on top of this. It's, it's kind of interesting that citizens and selectmen were on top of, were, were right on top of a, a financial, financial era. We're the ones that are on top of it.
And it's not the first time?
No, 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 it's not, it's not. And I don't, I don't want to say the next thought that's in my head, so I won't.
Yeah, moving right along.
And if I, I can just close.
Yeah, if you could close, that'd be good.
You know, just for anybody that could, is watching at 10:00 AM on a Friday morning, it was never this board. I think this board has always stood behind the benefit of non-mandated busing.
Oh, exactly.
Right, yes.
Have ultimately gotten, you know, gotten behind it. So our, our goal was never to cut this in any way, shape, or form, but I think that we saw that, you know, something didn't look right.
Right.
And needed to be looked into and with some pushing like by those people you mentioned, Carl, it works out for everyone in the town of Hanson.
Exactly.
And I did get a text message from someone over there and I, they're appreciative.
Yeah?
Awesome.
It's a win-win.
Good. Any, anyone have any questions or anything else on the, on the warrant?
Just a quick, because the, the way the schools presented the articles for the playgrounds is they requested we put it in one article, so all three get, you know, either up or down votes. Lincoln split it out into three articles. I agree with Lincoln's plan, I just wanted to make sure the rest of the board is aware because it was a capital committee conversation.
Anyone else have anything? The, the last article, the one that deals with banning roosters in town, citizens petition?
Yes.
One of the lines in it is that the town of Whitman is responsible for transporting the rooster someplace else?
I, that's an excellent question and it's, and it's an answer that I assure you, we will keep on town council and get an answer from them regarding the legality of that line.
Okay.
Because I would, I'm not an attorney, but I would certainly think that that may well be problematic.
Okay, okay.
Because, right.
And that will, we'll have that answer prior to town meeting, so that it can be made clear.
One question on that. Should hypothetically that that pass and then the following town meeting, there's a proposal to be a right to farm community, what happens to this? Because that should be in that.
Yeah, I would suggest if there was a proposal to have, be a right to farm community, which is a, it's a, it's a common article, actually as a volunteer in situ, we did it in situ, actually, but that's aside the point. But, but, you know, it's a common article and I would suggest that if that, if a future town meeting warrant was to have a right to farm article, that it would want, in this past, it would want to include a revocation of this item. And that would, I think, certainly be in the scope, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question. Article 30 on cable access funding funds?
Yes.
Is that the up-to-date number? Because I know that at one time it was, there was a different number and we had to come back and...
It is, yep. That number is the entirety of our expected receipts.
Right.
In fiscal year 2022 and then we, you know, we receive them and then transfer them to WHCA. That is, that is a upper limit, but if the, in fact, the actual fourth quarter payment from Comcast of Xfinity is less, then the payment to WHCA will be less because we can only pay what's in the account. It also includes a slight, it's $2,000 and change if I recall correctly, a slight amount of money that was not fully appropriated last year because the estimate was slightly low last year. So a little bit more came in, but this will, by our projections, Ken and mine, empty the account and send the entirety of the receipts in fiscal '22 to WHCA.
Beautiful, I know, because he, sometimes he gets concerned. Also on...
Eric Dresser and I spoke about it and he agrees that this is great.
Good. And also in the special within the annual, the police collective bargain contract, that, that is for last year?
It's for the current fiscal year 2022.
And we did, they were on no contract for the year? Right? So that being, have they settled a year's, one year's contract?
Yes, back in...
Last year.